Respect for individuals' privacy. There've been a lot of questions raised. Several city officials and concerned citizens in the city of Green Park have asked about the compensation for city employees. And I want to assure all of them their concerns are being taken very seriously. It's become clear to me the importance of this issue should be conducted in an open forum. So there's no misunderstanding and everyone wishing to speak here tonight will have their say. There is a speaker's sign up sheet Teresa had. Each person coming that wishes to speak, come to the podium, express themselves, but they first must put their name on the sign up sheet. And if you don't have Teresa, you got on the sign up sheet.
There's another one available in case anyone missed yet.
So anyone wants to come up and give a comment, you're welcome to come up to the podium. I'd like to give you guys a little history before the comments are made. This fall, the city Green Park will be celebrating its 30th anniversary since the incorporation in 1995.
Mayor, could you speak up a little bit? There's noise out here. Could you speak up a little?
Okay. I got a dry throat. Okay. This fall, the city Green Park is celebrating its 30th anniversary. We're going to party out here in September since the city's incorporation in 1995. Personally, when my next term expires, I'll serve the city of Green Park for 20 of the 30 years as either the alderman in Ward Two or as the mayor. It's been my pleasure to serve the city. It's the city that my grandfather moved here with his young daughter, my mom, in 1942. So I thank you for the honor of your service or my service. And thank you. A few years after my long stretch here, Diane Delancey started in 2008. Diane and I have worked together closely through all the years. Three mayors, three city administrative clerks, dozens of aldermen, et cetera. She's not only been a great friend to me, but a tireless worker for all of us. Pardon?
Go ahead.
And I always call her the golden gem of the city of Green Park. Our residents and businesses may not always remember who their alderman is, but they always know who Diane is. Whether they need to get information from any of the cities regarding permitting or services of any kind, pay the vendors, handle the management of the city, managing this building and its tenants, and make comments, take comments, make complaints, get bingo and Christmas party registrations ready, write quarterly newsletter, take the minutes of the city meetings, et cetera. Who is always there to help us, all of us, is Diane.
Amen.
She's always been here to help me and I can't thank you enough Diane. Anything that would possibly come up, Diane's there.
Amen.
A few years back, COVID-19 hit us all. And it was Diane who worked all of our ways through it here at City Hall. So when I was going through some of my own personal health setbacks last year, Diane got me through it until I could get back on my legs again, I think. Then the fall of '23, our city administrator, James Mello, who you guys all know, gave his announcement that he was going to be leaving the city of Green Park and move on to another position. This left Diane and I to manage the city all the way through the next nine months as we searched for a replacement for James. The board voted in a closed session on December the 5th of 2023 to increase Diane's pay to $34.02 an hour for all the extra tasks that we asked of her. We also knew that all the added hours she'd be putting in would be needed to get us through this time. Together, she and I worked many days, long into the night, to get everything done well and on time as needed. Once Teresa was brought on, Teresa, wow, thank you. There was transition time needed to get her up to speed and familiar with all of our processes and procedures. Past, this past December the 17th, the board went into a closed session to discuss employee reviews and to evaluate their compensation. One of her aldermen requested her pay revert back to 2020 pre-COVID rate plus a dollar and 30 cent raise she received in 2023, or back to $28.02 and to eliminate all additional overtime pay. The board couldn't come up with a conclusion, so they asked for additional information regarding overtime pay and her hourly wages all the way back to 2017. I supplied them with that requested, with the requested figures that next day, the next morning, in order to get the board to look over before the January 21st meeting. Then again, we were asked to go into a closed session to discuss this once more at the January 21st board meeting. After nearly an hour, they agreed to pay, to increase her pay to $30 per hour effective immediately, and I passed this along to our payroll folks. And the next morning, as requested, and then I met with Diane to let her know this great news, which would cost her $257 on her next check. As I expected, this was a very difficult conversation. And as I could tell, she felt very underappreciated and made me feel terrible. So after the closed meeting of the board in December and January, emails continued going back and forth between aldermen contrary to many warnings and requests to not violate sunshine laws. The case seems to still be open with a lot of buzz going around the city. So I don't want to mislead our residents and nothing is, nothing, let's see. And nothing is personally being withheld from any of you for any reason. But as this persisted and more information and closed meeting requests have been made, I wanted all of this to be discussed openly and transparently so there's no misunderstandings. Simply said, I personally believe that if you calculate the current value of her 2020 hourly rate at $26.69 to $20.25 and give her a 5% hourly raise per year, it compounds to $34.69 per hour, to which I believe personally it should be.
Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to ask you guys, any comments from the public? So please, Teresa, will you read the instructions on the sign up sheets? And proceed with calling anyone to the podium who'd like to talk to the public. And afterwards, we'll have a little time for both Diane to speak and then the alderman. Thank you, guys.
Each person desiring to speak shall be afforded a total of three minutes to address all matters of concern. A person representing a group shall be afforded a total of five minutes. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body rather than to an individual board member or the audience. City residents, business persons, or other interested parties are encouraged to submit written comments to the board for its consideration.
Okay, we got all the, anybody else on the podium? Okay, first speaker we've had requesting to speak is Sandy Hydon. 11077 Coors Lane. Hello Sandy. Speak loudly like I wasn't able to.
Pardon me?
Speak loudly like I wasn't able to.
Oh, thank you. I've never been accused of not having an auditorium voice. My name is Sandy Hydon and I live at 11077 Coors Lane. I moved to Green Park May 2012. As I write, I do not know how long Diane has worked for the city, but she has been here since I arrived. Diane has always been helpful, cheerful, and gone over and above whatever has been asked of her, whether it be by me, a citizen, or by the current mayor. And she has seen a few for the board of aldermen, and she has also seen a few of those. And since the departure of James Mello, her workload has increased. So you're thinking of cutting her hours or her pay, really? Would you put up with the needs of 2,600-plus residents? She's always got answers at the ready. She was hired to do a job and she has executed it well. You volunteered to run as alderman, alderwoman. You won. So you have to deal with a percentage of what Diane deals with. I am now, excuse me, I am not sure I have seen the benefits of having my alderman, but I have seen the benefits of having Diane in City Hall on a daily basis and applaud her work and her work ethic. Can you say the same? So how much do you get paid for one, maybe two meetings a month? 250 bucks? So that works out for a two-hour meeting at roughly $65 an hour. So you sit there to determine that Diane needs to have her pay cut. In the 12 and a half years I have been here, I've never needed an alderman, but I have needed Diane. What if, what if, because of this nonsense, she leaves to seek other employment? Would you find someone as knowledgeable, friendly, and competent at a lower salary? I doubt it. Sounds like you're being penny wise and pound foolish. Thank you.
Amen.
Amen.
Jason Beicher. Hey Jason.
Hey. Ditto to that. I can't top it. I just have a few bullet point points. I'm Jason Beicher, Beicher Landscape, Snow River.
Y'all did a great job.
Find out tomorrow.
Maybe I'll come back for a raise.
Just talk to the right person, not the wrong alderman.
So anyway, at past meetings, I heard about the CDs that the city holds with all their monies and how they rotate. Myself having CDs, I know that the rates currently are around four and a quarter. They got up to about 5.5%. So great money being made. Prior meeting I was at too, there was a discussion about raising the rents for the tenants in this building. Again, more money coming in. We all know about our property taxes going up. I don't know how that works with you in St. Louis County, but I'm sure if our taxes go up, you guys get more money. Also, I'm assuming, because I have accountants and attorneys for my businesses, I'm assuming the city attorney, he's not here tonight, his sub though, I'm sure their rates have increased. My accountant, since the pandemic, like it's getting ridiculous and crazy. I know when Teresa was sought after, you know, there was a nine-month period. I think that pay, if memory serves me correct, was around 70,000 annual salary. Based on Diane's number, that's probably 60,000. Simple math here, 130,000. I don't think she was paid 130,000 to do both jobs. So there's money there in savings that's been left on the table that could be allocated for, for her by not having paid the city clerk in the absence of Diane doing all of her work. And then like it was brought up, if she would quit or seek out other employment, it took nine months to find a city clerk. I don't know how long it would take to replace Diane, and I personally don't feel she's replaceable. Wages should keep up with inflation. I mean, simple contracts, all contracts should have a 2% at least provision in there. That's just typical inflation, although inflation has been well beyond that the past several years. So even, like I said, my contract doesn't even have that 2%. So, and I've been here for 10 years, nine years of no increases of that. So, thank you.
And you did a great job.
Thank you.
Joan Erin?
Hi, I'm Joan Erin. I live on Coors Lane. I've had many dealings with Diane and I can sing her praises just like everybody else, but you've all heard all of that already. My question is, we had James as a city administrator clerk, correct? And you could not find anyone qualified for that position, so it was changed to city clerk.
Correct.
She's the deputy clerk.
Correct.
So obviously, there's still administrative duties that she's going to continue to be doing, even though we now have someone in James' place. So she's still doing additional things from what she was supposed to be the first time around. The other thing I wanted to ask is if anybody else who's an employee, and I know salaries for employees is confidential, but if you have other employees that you've been giving bigger raises to and then you want to take money back from her, I find that terribly unfair. And I will tell you that reading in the paper that you wanted to have this as a closed meeting as opposed to an open meeting was a real red flag to me when I saw what this meeting was about. So I thank the mayor for at least making it open so that we have our chance to say what needs to be said. It took you a long time to get that city clerk position filled. And everything that she did during that time was very time sensitive. People wouldn't have gotten their bills paid, they wouldn't have had permits. They wouldn't, if she had not picked up all of those duties, this, this little village would be in bad shape, quite honestly. It's not like you could have just thrown that all on the desk and waited nine months for somebody to show up and catch up. So I think it's fair that she keep the newer rate, absolutely. I think she deserves it. She, you said she hadn't had a raise since 2023. So on top of that is another reason why she should be keeping at that rate. The other thing is, when I talked to her about what her duties were, she's the emergency contact for Missouri calls, things like that. Do you pay her on-call pay for that?
Nope.
A lot of companies, you would pay them on-call. So again, you're getting a bargain with her, quite honestly. And you know, I, I want Green Park to prosper. I live here, I've been here since 2014. And she's the first face that you see, that's who I got my occupancy permit from. And that's what makes this village such a nice place. And I think you should retain your good employees because there's a lot of hateful people out there right now. And we need to keep Green Park as nice as it is.
Thank you. Amen.
How y'all doing? I'm Rick Wagner. I have a business in here, RB Wagner. I just came by to, you know, say exactly what these people are saying. I've known Diane since she started here. She just, if you need something done, you go to Diane. We do work for the city, you know, under contract. You know, we have a business here, we just built a new building down the road. And everything goes seamless. And I think if you have a dedicated, good employee, they're the hardest people in the world to find. You can ask any business owner, what's the biggest challenge? And that's finding good people. And Diane's one of those. I think to reduce her worth for a couple pennies here or there is, I don't think is the right thing to do. So, I'm not going to tell you what to do, but I know what I would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Kitty Tuberty?
My name is Kitty. I live on Bob Mar Drive. I've lived in Green Park for 31 years.
We can't hear you.
Oh, really? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Kitty and I live on Bob Mar. And I've lived in Green Park for 31 years. And so I've known Diane a long time. And like I agree with what everybody said, that she is just a really good employee. And good employees are very hard to find. And that to take any money away from her at this point would be very, very bad idea. That I just think that she's worth every penny, that she's getting paid at this time. And I just believe that, like I said, she, she's just always cheerful, always, you know, very knowledgeable and very, like I said, I just think that she is one of those people that you want to do anything you can to.
Hold the conversations down. Carolyn, Mike, Mike?
There.
Carol?
Well, thank you.
All right, Kitty, sorry to interrupt you. James, if you guys keep your comments till we get done, okay?
Oh, we're biting our tongue. Don't worry about that. Wow.
Wow. Big organization for you.
Right.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to thank you for inviting us. As you can see, we have plenty of our citizens, which I know they're my neighbors also. And we clearly state, technically, you guys work for us. And we look like, we like the 3460, I believe is what you said, beer. As a citizen, I believe Diane has actually worked for. I believe you guys need a raise, and I believe she needs a raise, flat out across the board. That's how I feel. I believe the positions that you guys hold and the time that you guys take is actually not actually being compensated through my eyes. Diane has been here throughout the city and has held this city's hand through the tough times and through the good times. And to find someone to replace her at her pay, at her rate, is virtually impossible. I'm not going to say her age, but anyone younger would not even attempt to approach the job at the pay rate, even at the pay rate that she's getting, even if it's 34 something an hour now. I personally have apprentices who make $40 an hour. And they're learning, they're just getting into training. And then, so to have someone fresh off the ground trying to learn something and someone who's actually experienced to do the job, I believe she needs that and then some. So I really will appreciate if you guys would consider how valuable she is to the city and then how valuable she would be if you guys left, how much it actually would cost you to replace her. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Jaci Fowler?
I don't think I have anything that would add to it.
Okay.
I think it's already been covered.
Thank you, Jaci. Janice Dozer? Janice?
Hi, I would like to speak in support of Diane as the tenant of 11100 Mueller Road. So paying rent for this facility, I have never really had any issues because anytime I have, I just have to call Diane and she takes care of everything. As a business that hires a lot of people, I have at least 60 employees working for me, I do know the value of having an honest woman with integrity to work for you. And I do have to hire a lot of people of a lot of different ages. And, you know, I'm just going to put myself right there with you, Diane. You know, those of us that have been around the block a few times, we take our jobs very seriously and we don't count the hours. We just try to get the job done. So I'm piling on with what everyone else said, but I'm piling on as the tenant here. And I'm so grateful to be a part of this building. Things are great. I don't have any issues ever. And we get to work hard because nobody bothers us down around the little corner. So thank Diane for taking care of us.
Thanks, Jen.
I appreciate this.
Donald Trump?
Yeah.
Do you have anything to say, Ditan?
I'm Donald Trump. I live on her, I've known her for over 50 years. Her kids went to school like my brother's kids. I've been having problems in my, on my street from, with my neighbor for a couple of years. My alderman does nothing, nothing, neither one of them. But whoever wrote this deal to cut her pay needs to withdraw it tonight.
Amen.
If they don't withdraw it, they won't be in office.
Thank you. Jeff Blum?
Close to the end. Good evening. My name is Jeff Blum. I don't live here. I am currently on assignment with the city and very happy to be here. It's a really nice little town, given some of the other ones that work here. I've been doing this, I've been an accountant for 47 years. I've worked in government finance as a chief financial officer for about 28 of those. And the world is changing. And it is more difficult, and I'm really gratified to hear so many people talk about the recognition that unfortunately, we're all old enough to realize that the days of, I can remember when I started for four bucks an hour. It's a long time ago. So I would just recognize that the city has two full-time and two part-time employees. When you lose a full-time employee, you've lost 40% of your workforce. It's a lot easier to lose one employee when you've got 50 of them. It's really hard when you've got two full-time and two part-time. And I would simply urge the board to be compassionate, to be generous, to be the people that they want other people to treat them as.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Anybody else have anything to say? Anybody? Stan?
First, I just want to say thank you to all the fine people. I appreciate it. To the board, I will tell you, in my 16 years, I have never felt so unappreciated and undervalued as you have made me feel. You had, I know you were upset over the amount of overtime, but you had to know I was putting in long hours, as it was mentioned in every single meeting. And let me tell you, I earned every penny of it. I never wanted to spend my evenings and weekends working, but it was absolutely necessary. I put my personal life on hold, even canceling a trip to Panama City Beach that was planned with my son and his family over spring break. At Christmas, I drove to Indiana where they live on Christmas Eve, drove back the very next day on Christmas Day so that I could be here the day after to open up the office for anyone that was going to file as a candidate for office in the April election. Many times, I felt so overwhelmed that I wanted to just walk out. If it hadn't been for the mayor being here and talking me off the ledge, so to speak, I would have left. If it hadn't been, if I hadn't been here, permits would not have been processed, bills paid, deposits made, and a whole host of other things. During the months I was working as interim city clerk, and keep in mind, this was the second time that I've done this. I alone processed all permit applications, took in all receipts, made all bank deposits, paid all the bills, responded to auditor requests for files, and on top of that, had to learn a new accounting program because we went from QuickBooks desktop to QuickBooks Online. And QuickBooks Online is totally different. So there was a huge learning curve there. Plus, this gentleman increased the chart of accounts tremendously, which meant it was going to take longer to process deposits and checks because I'd have to look up the account number. During that time, I also attended 17 evening meetings. And then there were also seven neighborhood enhancement program applications I had to deal with. Four of those are still pending. I had to do a lot of research because there were many things that I had never done myself and James had not shared with me. One was submitting a multi-page MSD annual report for stormwater, where you have to list the amount of salt to use. And I mean, it's very, very time consuming. Fortunately, Mr. Beicher includes the salt usage on his invoices. So I had to pull out all those invoices to check. Then it was the first time I had ever done a election with the board of elections. I did not know what all had to be done. All I ever did before was notarize forms. I had to get with the board of elections to learn everything I had to submit for that upcoming election. Otherwise, it never would have happened. I am also the emergency contact person for Missouri One Call 24/7. I receive numerous calls on my personal cell phone at all times of the evenings and morning hours. And I mean, I'm talking 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 hours, and I mean, I'm talking two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, four in the morning, waking me from a sound sleep. Never have I asked to be paid for being on twenty-four-seven call, or have I made an issue of it. Would any of you like to be awakened at three AM? I do so many things on my personal time for the city that this board is totally unaware of. I use my personal time to shop for bingo prizes, kids' holiday party, stocking stuffers, creating crafts for the kids to make, and also myself making decorations, so that this place looks very festive and nice at Christmas, and buying the food, making dips and other crop pet pot items, without ever asking for overtime pay, much less mileage. When I go on vacation, I even take my laptop and my iPad to handle and respond to as many emails as possible. I have never asked to get paid for that either. Election days, I come in early, fix the coffee, bring in donuts and snacks for the people working the coals, and I've never asked for anything back. I do it because I like them to be well-said when they're here all day. I have always been the one you could depend on, always doing more than what is expected, and always keeping in mind what is best for the residents and businesses of Green Park. I have made a lot of friends here, and I enjoy talking with them and seeing them at different city events. Over the years, I spent six weeks attending the Citizens Police Academy, so I could get a better understanding of their operations, especially with dispatch, because I felt that would help the residents when they called and asked. I also spent eight weeks attending four-hour classes at the Community College in Wildwood to get certified as a CERT team member. For those of you who don't know what CERT is, it stands for Community Emergency Response Team. I thought it was important that someone from the city get training on all the different types of emergencies, especially when we're having the senior population here on, for bingos and other events, I was afraid someone might have a heart problem. I don't understand why you're making such a big deal about my overtime. It was a special circumstance, a one-time thing. How did you expect me to do two full-time jobs without working overtime? What I earned in overtime is still less than what it would've cost you if you were still paying James and myself. You should all be grateful that Tim and I put the time in and kept the city operating. And with all due respect, none of you have any idea what we do down in the office, or what issues face us every day, because none of you ever come into the office with the exception of Carol. Life would've happened if Tim and I weren't there. Then, you know, when I first came to Green Park, the city administrator at that time never told me about any pension or retirement plan, even af- after I asked her. After a couple of years, I just happened to read an old audit report and discovered that the city did have one, but no was, no one was participating in it. I brought the topic up many times again with the city administrator, and was repeatedly told no. She made me fearful that she was going to fight me. After she left the city, I approached Mayor Reinagel about it. He apologized and kept promising, promising me the city would make it up to me by making a lump sum contribution. While I knew that was never going to happen, and of course, I was right. That meant I missed out on eight years of the city's matched funds and the earnings on that. Eight years. I was told by several people that I should get a lawyer, especially with the brutal treatment I received from that same individual, but I didn't want to be that type of person to sue. Looking back, I think I made a mistake about that decision.
Good one.
Yeah, you think I'm being paid too much? I think you gotta bargain. Thank you.
Me?
Yep.
What's wrong?
Oh. I'm Fred Hayne. I live in Green Park. I'm not gonna talk about salaries, okay? What I would like to know, you know, this started thirty years ago. Somebody did that, okay? Times have changed. Costs have changed. Salaries have changed. What I would like to know is what the financial outlook in the future for the city is, not what's printed in the little, um, paper that's set out. Is there some planning, uh, looking at the future things like roads, salaries, and other things? And I know you can't answer that right now, but I would like to find that out, 'cause when this started, there was a lot of revenue to run the city. And I'm hoping that that has not degraded to the point where other issues will be arising. So, I would eventually like an answer on that. The other thing is, this kinda hits on salaries. But not your kind of salary. I've always looked at mayors and boards as a service. I would be very disturbed to find out that there's any plans for salary increases for you people. You're serving the city, you're not here for a salary. There you are. When I started out, I was, took a lot of heat, of course, and I served as an alderman for a short time, and I tried to give the salary back, but Paul advised me that was not really a good idea. So, I would like a commitment, such as it is, to not have any discussion about increasing your salaries at all. And if you don't like what you're earning, I think one of the ladies said that for your hours here, you're making sixty-seven dollars an hour, which I could probably challenge that, but, uh, one way or the other. But you're here to serve, not to have salaries. What you're getting now is a little compensation, and that's the way it should remain. And I'd be di- very disturbed if there were other avenues that, uh, money was leaving the city. I don't wanna get into that, but that becomes a situation where I might be accusing, but I hope that all the revenue that's being used is being entered in a, a journal, so somebody can look at it, study it, and maybe advise. That's pretty much what I got on my mind. I hope you agree with it. If you don't, it's your choice.
Thanks, sir. Does anybody else wanna address the crowd? You wanna give us your, your name and address?
Yes. Rick Lawyer. I'm Levon Arnett, drive down here. And I was a union worker, and I've also worked after I retired for an individual smaller company. That's very well-known, I'm not gonna mention it. When I left there, uh, I, my body finally broke down, I was a construction worker for thirty years, and it broke down, doing my other job, and I had to get surgery, never asked me to come back, 'cause I've been thirty-four years helping build a big business that if I told you the name of, you guys would be shocked. But anyway, the point is, I gave my heart and soul, and this lady's giving her heart and soul. She's not just here to fight the paycheck. She cares about this place, and that, that just drives me crazy, that. We're lucky to have somebody that cares. Most people go to work and they just do their job and go home. They don't even give a damn if their company does good. Well, I gave mine from the company I worked for, and the owner stepped back and his daughter took over. She didn't, I never even got a thank you for thirty, forty years. Nothing. And you wanna take and possibly remove somebody who really gives a damn about their job now? Good luck trying to find somebody. Does anybody here wanna go to work and do her job for thirty-four dollars an hour? I don't think so. And have her knowledge and experience. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Uh, get the alderman a chance this, oh, sorry, Steve?
I just have a couple of more thoughts that have come to mind since people are talking, and I think, and that's really scary. Um, so she said she didn't, she came back like Christmas Day or day after something.
Christmas Day.
Yeah, so, if Teresa was here, why didn't she open up the office?
She wasn't here then.
She wasn't here then, okay.
And I thought that that was past Christmas.
Oh, you're, okay, thank you. Okay. Um, I guess I'd sort of like, where somebody else mentioned it, suggest that the people who started this procedure tonight, withdraw it. I think we all see her value, and I would also like to be bold, very bold, and recommend to pay higher. For forty dollars an hour.
Alderman, any of the aldermen wanna make a comment? Mike?
I'll start.
Joe?
Okay, I feel pretty much the same as everybody in the audience. Diane's been here, she's, she's done a tremendous job as far as keeping the city running, I agree with that. But we as stewards of the money, you don't hear what's actually going on, okay? Diane stood in for Mello until we hired Teresa, and she got the thirty-four dollars an hour, which is over seventy thousand dollars a year, okay? But she didn't quite make the year, I think it was eight months, roughly, but the pay was supposed to stop after we hired Teresa. Teresa is getting paid thirty-three dollars an hour, and she is the city clerk, okay? Doesn't make any difference to some folks, but if you got a city clerk making less than a deputy city clerk, that doesn't add up. Please, don't, don't, okay? Everyone's not gonna agree with me, but we have to take in consideration that Diane works for Teresa, okay? No, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to the audience. Be respectful, we were respectful to you.
I don't talk.
Okay? Now, you people are ganging up on us, that's the way we feel, okay? Which is not right. I can see this was all organized for an attack to the alderman. One missing doesn't hear all this. Pretty soon, I'm gonna ask you to walk out, sir. You're being disrespectful. So, how all you feel, I agree with Diane, she can make fifty dollars an hour, whatever, make it a hundred, who cares? What does Mr. Jeff make? Would you, uh, explain how much you make an hour, sir?
I have billing break.
Yeah, is it over a hundred dollars an hour?
It is not.
It's not?
No.
Okay, how much did you make last year? Uh, just a question, what did you make last year? It's in records, open records, we can find out, really.
From the city?
Yes.
Uh, fifty-four thousand dollars.
Okay. What did Diane make last year? Diane, what did you make last year?
It came to ninety-three thousand because of all the.
Should I say anymore? Ninety-three thousand, did you hear that? And you guys are attacking us, she made ninety-three thousand, okay? She was worth it.
She was working two people's jobs.
Okay, whatever, we make a lot less, and we're here not for the money. We're talking about money, money, money. It's not all about the money. People work for a lot less. We're in here to help you, to help the residents, the commercial people, we don't do this 'cause it's money. This is what it's all about right here, right now, money. It's terrible. Shouldn't be that way. Any other alderman have a comment?
Carol? I have a comment. And going along with what Joe's saying, there, there was never, ever a time that we did not appreciate Diane.
Talk louder, Carol.
There was never a time, excuse, I have a blood vessel issue, which is why my face gets red, so I apologize. There's never a time that we did not love Diane, respect Diane, and think that Diane was doing a great job. That has never happened. What happened, though, if you wanna make more money, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, Diane, were you not offered that position on numerous times to make that additional money as?
Only when Zella had left.
And the city clerk, I was told that she was offered that job and didn't, didn't want the job, fully capable of doing that job. Um, after the time she's been here with her longevity, she should know what she's doing, and it is part of her job, and she went far above and beyond, but was compensated, did it well. I heard you complain occasionally, but you were so tired, you looked like you wanted to fall over dead. But there is no time that we did not appreciate you, there's no time that we thought we were disrespecting you. This came out of a raise that you got during a timeframe that you were doing all that additional work, which was invaluable to us. But when the time came and it wasn't terminated properly, you did get a lot of extra money that was not supposed to be given to you, we don't want it back. That's not a big deal because of your value. Uh, you're, you're the snappiest dresser in town, I gotta say that. When you walk through that door, you see someone put together, someone that's respectful, someone that can defuse the most horrible people that come in here, and sometimes we get really mean people that come in here. But this was not a personal assault on you. I question, when you were approached about this, if it was explained correctly. You know, we thought we were doing you a favor in your autumn years of relaxing, that you could finally take a breather, not have to do all this overtime, not have to do any running around. This was a favor to you. We thought we were being smart doing that, along with what Joe said also. But I don't want anybody out there to ever accuse anybody here that is sitting up here to think that we don't love her, that we don't respect her, that we don't appreciate her, and know the value of someone that we have, and also, she's honest. And it's hard in this day and age to find people that are honest. And that's about it, from me.
Jim?
Um, I agree with Carol. Diane, you know, I've, I get upset. I called you a number of times, can I bring you a coffee? Can I come coffee for you? Let me help you. Why are you here at eight o'clock at night when I would drive by? You know I love you and I value you. Um, but I have to agree with Carol as far as, and, and I wonder also that this was never conveyed to you accurately, or maybe not at all, that the thirty-four dollars was in the interim when you were taking on the load, and then, I mean, tremendous load, and I worried about you, and you know that. I'm not sure that was conveyed to you, I don't know, to, maybe, maybe not. I'm not accusing anyone, I just don't know that you understood that once Teresa came on, that you would go back to your original pay, because that is what was discussed by the alderman. I don't think your original pay was enough, and we talked about that. Um, I voted for a raise. Did I vote for thirty-four? Did I vote for thirty-four? I'll admit I did not, because I feel the same that you, to make more than, I hate to use the word, but your boss is just something that is not, not accurate. But did I vote for your raise? Absolutely. Did we ever want any of that money back? No way. And not, I want to make this clear, not all the aldermen had a problem with overtime. You had to work those hours. You were here at eight o'clock in order for that stuff to get done. So there were, the overtime, at least for some of us, was not the issue at all. It's, it's strictly to go back. And I don't feel like the term y'all, when you say "take it away," it was an interim thing, so it's not really taking it away. It was an interim thing that was supposed to end, but not to go back to your original pay. You needed a raise, and there were, most of us fought for that, okay? But most of us were not up for the thirty-four, so...
But then you have to keep in mind, though, when Teresa was hired, you say it should stop. I was still doing everything.
Right, right, right.
I had to train.
Right. And that's why none of us, and we talked, yeah, absolutely.
So it just didn't, the work didn't go away?
It was set up at the beginning when we hired her, that, or when we talked about it, that it would stop. I have no problem, and I think most, a lot of us might not, that it didn't stop right away, because you were training and you were still doing a lot of it, which is why the thought of taking it away was not even on the table, right? You worked for that. Should it have ended a little bit earlier? Maybe, but that's not something that any of us, well, most of us didn't care about. So I hope you know, and I know it feels like a personal attack, and it broke my heart to hear you up there, because that's not how we feel. And when we were talking over and over, we never once did any of us not say how much we appreciated you, how much you do for everyone. I mean, you are very much valued. But it does come down also to be a steward of the money. Someone mentioned about money coming in. I think that was Mr. Bascher, maybe, talking about money coming in. It is, but Jeff or maybe the mayor can talk about how much money is going out on roads and the, I mean, just one thing after another. So we don't have, I know what you misled. We do not have an abundance of money, let me assure you. We have enough, obviously, but we do not have an abundance. So I wanted to make that clear, because that was kind of misconstrued. But just know that we do, we do appreciate you. We so do. Every one of us did.
Thanks, Steve. Ron, anything to say?
I just want to make a comment that I have never heard anybody say any bad comments with you, whether it be bad in closed sessions or open sessions. You know, they're very complimentary of you, and this, the amount that you're being paid is not reflective at all as to your performance or anything about you. So if you think that we're in any way being negative towards you, you can just cast that right out of your mind, because that's not true at all.
Yes. I'd like to clarify some things here. Obviously, you're not hearing the whole story. December, our December sixteenth meeting, we spent in closed session after that meeting, an hour and nineteen minutes discussing pay, what, what hourly pay raise, pay raise. We wanted to, Diane, to go back to her ordinary deputy clerk pay wage. There were, there were other things discussed at that meeting, and all of the employees here got a raise. We instructed the, the mayor, and I say instructed, it is the Board of Aldermen who run the city. It is the mayor who is, who is tasked with doing the supervision of the city employees, and he is the person who runs the board meetings, okay? So when the, when the Board of Aldermen make a decision and they task the mayor with making a notification on pay raises and so forth, or whatever it might be, the mayor is obligated to, to do just that in accordance with what the Board of Aldermen has decided. That's, that's law. Okay, let's, let's fast forward here to the January meeting. I was, I was ill, I had, I had the flu on that one, but I, it is my understanding, and I'm correct, and Diane's pay was boosted even a little more at that time than we had decided on at the, at the December sixteenth meeting. Apparently, that wasn't, that didn't sit well with, with the mayor. The reason that we're all here tonight, if, if you didn't get the St. Louis call yet, this is the Thursday, February sixth issue. Don?
I don't get it, my neighborhood.
I know you're there, and you...
I don't get it, my neighborhood.
Yeah, you don't, all right, that's fine. In the, in the upper corner, and this is above the fold, as the newspaper people say, so when you're seeing it on the stand, this is what you see. Greenport Bar, Greenport Board of Aldermen to hold special meeting February tenth. This is by Ellie Marshall, who is the news editor for the Greenport Call. Greenport Board of Aldermen is holding a special meeting, and it gives you time and place. Per city code, special meeting is able to be called by two aldermen or by the mayor at any time. Ward one alderman, Michael Broden, asked me. Ward three alderman, Marty Finn, allegedly called for a special meeting, though they wanted it closed for only the board to attend, not open to the public. Mayor Tim Thusman, Mayor Tim Thuston opted for a meeting open to the public to ensure This is slander. I contacted the person who wrote this article Friday, when, when it was, when the article was posted on the net, and asked her how this came about. At that time, she told me that the information that she had, that she had in there was from the mayor, Tim Thuston. And I said, I asked of her, "Did you call the mayor, or did he call you?" And she said, "No, he called me." And I said, "Well, what, what was the deal there?" "Oh, he wanted to, he wanted to advertise this meeting, so he wanted to, he wanted to be sure people knew about it." And I said, "Well, that's a little unusual, isn't it, that he would call you to, you know, don't you usually get this off and that, or call, say, "call"? And she said, "Yes." And I said, "Well, you're, you're incorrect. I didn't call for this meeting, and I talked to Alderman Finn today and asked him if I could speak for him, and he said, yes, adamantly, he did not call for this meeting."
So he did.
He is, he is working, and, and he, and Tim Thuston knew days in advance of setting this meeting, that Marty Finn couldn't be here. This wasn't something that Finn, that popped up that Finn had to work tonight. So this meeting was called, number one, knowing that Alderman Finn would not be here, and that this coincided with the meeting that, that Ron Slattery had set up for months. And you're, you know, we're in the mix here. The, the reason that we have closed meetings, and I might add too, that this, that this article ends with the expected topic of the meeting is the hourly wage of Deputy City Clerk Diane Bollinger. That's inappropriate. You don't, you don't mention people's names when you're talking about wage issues, or holiday pay, or hiring, or whatever. Just like you don't, you don't have these, this type of, of meeting open to the public because we're not only going to discuss wage issues, but you get into discussing the atmosphere in the, in the workplace, personalities and so forth, and that's not proper for bringing it into an open session. So my, my, my advice here is, don't, don't take for granted all that, all that you've been told prior to coming in here. What, what Mr. Thuston did with calling the, calling the newspaper and having this printed, this is slander. And I'm being slandered, Marty Finn's being slandered, and I'm not going to stand for this. If I, if I have to go the route with the attorney and sue the city and sue him and sue the call, that's what I'm going to do, because I'm not, I'm not going to keep listening to this, and we don't do anything or whatever. This is all pumped up by the mayor. So that's my two cents where, and I've got, I've got about three pages of notes here, if anybody would like to get into the, to the nitty-gritty of who called what and who sent who the, the emails that he's supposedly basing this on. I've got them, Marty Finn's got them, so I don't know. The best thing we can do right here is, and I, and I will call for Joe to, to terminate the meeting, to adjourn.
I will second that. In fact, I think, I want to get this along to this Neighborhood Watch meeting, which was supposed to be taken simultaneously to this meeting, okay? Let's, let's go, Diane.
Yeah. A motion to adjourn?
Yes, a motion to adjourn.
Seconded, Jim. So in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion?
So, excuse me, wait a minute. Excuse me. So we came out here tonight to an open meeting that Mr., I don't know your name, Mike, says we really didn't have any right to be at, but yet y'all are stewards of the money we paid you. Is that correct?
Correct.
On the board, yes, right.
But this, this is, excuse me, but this was Mr. Broden. He's not speaking for the rest of us.
Excuse me, this is Matt Tammy. We're, we're adjourned. If you guys are prepared to discuss, you're welcome. Discuss on your own. Mike, I don't get the call, my honor. I ain't got it in ten years.
Remember that during the election. You're being jacked.